Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, June 17, 2019. Mr. Clark, if you'll go through tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have open forum. We have appointments with East Bridgewater Insurance Agency at 6:30, Esther Burke and Chamberlain at 6:45, Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association at 7:00. We have a joint appointment with the Library Retrustees and a joint appointment with the planning board and some action items.
Thank you for joining me in my pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of all which stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone here this evening for open forum? Again, nobody. Close open forum.
Shocking.
And we will go into our appointments for town insurance. And I just let the folks at home know, it's been three years since we put out to bid the insurance. The former town administrator did it three years ago with three firms, East Bridgewater Insurance Agency and Esther Burke and Chamberlain. And I think we just felt as though it was time to take a look at that, see if there were any cost savings available to the town. So we're going to stop. We have three bidders coming in tonight, and we'll discuss everything afterwards with town council and probably make a decision probably in the next week or so. Just to let you know, all the firms that are coming in tonight, everyone has 15 minutes. We expect everyone to stay within that timeframe. We expect the firms to just focus on their, what they can do for the town. And we may have one or two questions after each presentation. If we do, we'll ask the same question of all three firms. Thank you. And do we have a representative from East Bridgewater Insurance Agency here tonight? Come on up, introduce yourself.
My name is Ken Feinberg, I'm with East Bridgewater Insurance Agency. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to go up and answer. My wife told me to dress more like an executive today, more professionally.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Well, I changed out of my bathing suit and I put this on. And today, what happens is, I think, you know, it's more about style over substance. And, you know, we all have nice fancy brochures. We all, you know, talk a good game, we're all going to do this, we're all going to make these promises. And it sounds really good, because every, I mean, I could throw down a hundred brochures here. When we bid on the account four years ago, three years ago, we had a lot of things that we said we could offer that was different for the town. And we had a couple of brochures, I'm not saying we didn't, because we partnered with Travelers, who's an A++ rated company, financially strong, has a commitment to towns, they insure more municipalities than any other company in the country, I mean, a lot of municipalities. But as big as they are and the resources they have, we're just East Bridgewater Insurance Agency, and our commitment was to the town of East Bridgewater. It was and it always has been. We diligently applied that thinking to when we wrote the town. I had insured this town through another company over 25 years ago. And I knew the town, this is my second home, I take pride in it, and I made sure that we did our homework when we wrote this account. We went in and we didn't take for granted anything that was written on the prior insurance policy. We went in there, we asked the two things, loss runs and a copy of the policies which were on hand. I then went in and met with all the department heads, asked them what their issues were, what their concerns were, every one of them. I sat down with the treasurer, I explained how workers' comp works, because it's a little bit different than people think it is. We went over every single line, I just did not take for granted what was in the policy. Went to the town administrator, I asked him what his concerns were. And his concerns were, you know, we get a, we'll get our bill, and then, you know, six months later, or whatever, and the audit's done, and then we're getting a charge for $20,000, $30,000. I happen to have, the last audit that was done, it was for $23,000. And then you have to come in and you have to rebudget it. I said, "That won't happen anymore." And it didn't. We went into town, I'd meet with the treasurer at least twice a year during the year, how the payroll's going, what's happening. We never had an audit additional more than $1,000, I think, since we've been here. We had, we knew to keep the claims down and keep the prices, to keep the prices down, we had to keep the claims down. And I just saw a trend when I came in here that was not good. And it was trending up. The mod, we'd had a lower mod, and it was workman's compensation discount you get from the state, it was creeping up. Last year, it went to .90. And let me explain this, we've been in the town, we're just finishing the third year. Our results, you don't count last year, because those numbers aren't even in. So our results for EBIA, after next year would be a full three-year term. What we inherited was what we had to try to fix, because we knew those figures were going up. So for instance, the very first year we were here, we got a bill from the Hartford. And Hartford represents the 111F, a policy which covers police and fire. It's a medical reimbursement plan, it's like their workman's compensation. We got a bill, when we had bid it, the cost at that particular time was, I think, $12,000 or $13,000. I got a call from them saying, "We have a number." And I said, "What is it?" And they said, "$36,000." So it was going to go from 13, 12 or 13,000 to $36,000. I just about had a heart attack. Now, that's what I do, I negotiate every single price that I get, every single policy that I get, the ones with Travelers and the ones that aren't anything to do with Travelers. I negotiated the price down to $18,000 at that time. They wanted 36. I went to shop, everybody else was around $40,000 or $50,000. I then said to them, "Listen, we're doing things here that have never been done in the town before. We had more safety meetings in one year than I think the town had had in the previous 20." We instituted protocols for claims. We set up portals, a website, so that employees can go and get claim forms. If there was any kind of an issue, I would call up, whether it was the hospital, the doctor, to make sure a bill was paid. Once we got the protocols in place, any kind of issues that we'd had before were just disappearing. That allowed us, by doing that, Hartford agreed that, listen, you know, these losses are unsustainable, you know, we're going to want the 36,000. The next year, they went up again by 5,000, they wanted their 36. They held it at 23, and I said to them, "If we continue these programs, will you keep it at the 23?" And they said, "Yes." And I have Exhibit B here, and it shows the losses that were before us, and the losses of the last years under our auspices. And they've gone down dramatically. And they're happy, and we don't have that huge rate increase, we've kept them down. It's good for the town, whether we insure it or anybody else does, these are the protocols that should be in place that never were in place. Between the automobiles, we just, we took everything as if it was just being written for the first time. And we went over the automobiles, every automobile, we found mistakes in the automobiles, we saved the town a ton of money. We were vigilant, every time, every time there's an issue or a claim that day, it's taken care of. I mean, a student can shoot a spitball to where the office is right here, and we were on it all the time. I personally went over, or have been going over, every single claim that we get in, whether it's workman's compensation, somebody hits a pothole, somebody trips and falls on the bleachers, we're a part of it. When the firing cottage next door, there's an issue with that, it's a vacant building. And as such, there was questions as to what to do with it. Travelers doesn't like vacant buildings, especially ones that are quite old, don't meet current codes, and frankly, are dangerous. We went over there with town council, did an inspection, a loss control people went over there. And what I negotiated this year with them is, "Well, we'll keep it on the policy, but we're going to raise the deductible to $25,000." So on that one property, we stayed on it, and we increased the deductible to 25. All the other, all the other policies have the standard $10,000 deductible. We've, you know, we've done as much as we can every single day to stay on top of this for the town. And there's a sense of pride in that office, what we do. And there's some more programs that we'd like to institute, we'd, they don't call it an employee handbook so much, it's an employee manual. That, that would be one of the steps that we want to get rolling, we started it, we want to continue it. There's Employee Manual, there's the, just some of the unfinished business that we do have that we want to continue, some of the programs. The EAP coverage is the Employee Assistance Plan. Empathia is not an embedded policy, it's a separate standalone policy, but the coverages for the employees of the town are second to none. Town employees are allowed assistance in any one of a number of issues that might come up within the family. They're allowed three visits, personal visits from practitioners. We don't think it's being utilized enough, and we'd like to see that plan utilized more. There's also, we have that, and then the website itself. Our website can be accessed by managers of the town and employees of the town, from claims to see what kind of coverages we have, it's right there, our own website for the town. There's, you know, and all these, these issues, we have, Travelers affords legal, some legal coverage assistance. You know, you have town council, but on other matters that maybe the town doesn't want to use, you can use Travelers Legal Assistance, and they specialize in town issues. Again, I got a million brochures that can show you that, you'll have them in the proposal. We, on several occasions, the town has, used that particular part of the site, the legal portion. And the school had an issue with Chromebooks catching on fire and exploding. They came to us, "Is this covered?" "No, it wouldn't fall under the deductible." But there was an issue about the manufacturing itself of the Chromebooks and what kind of obligation they have. They then went under some guidance and, you know, suggestions, they went back to the manufacturer, and I think they settled, and everybody was really happy with the result. Same thing, I believe there was an issue with the boilers. They were, the boilers are fairly new, and it was a question whether they were covered or not, they weren't. But then we talked about it, and I believe at the time, this is like two years ago, found out that the manufacturer had something to do with what was going on, and I believe the town saved a bunch of money that way. The highway department, Public Works, they've utilized our site, website for training, for assistance, again, ways to save town money that you just won't see in a quote. And I guess, the other thing is, the quote's going to be about numbers, you're going to see the numbers there. We just ask that, sometimes numbers can be deceiving. I know when we wrote the account, we were $50,000 cheaper than our competitor at that time. I know they came back and lowered their price, but we were $50,000 cheaper. I know, right now, I think we're at the same price we were when we wrote this thing three years ago. So there's going to be some, maybe big number discrepancies in the bid itself, and I would just like to see where that discrepancy is, maybe we can look at, just to make sure that the coverages are going to be apples to apples. Because I noticed a couple, you know, anomalies there, that kind of like, didn't have time, just a, you know, a few minutes to look at it, and I hope we can just have that time to do it. But other than that, I mean, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
No, I think what you're saying is right, we have to have someone, at least beyond my knowledge, to look at the three bids and making sure, what we are looking at here is, can we match up?
Right.
What is the protection, what is the deductions, what are the differences, how much of a difference will that make on service?
Right.
To the town, and that's what we'll have to do.
Yeah, we'll be working with town council on that. Any questions?
Nope, I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you.
How many towns does your firm represent, or how many towns do you work with?
One, East Bridgewater. Yeah, Travelers thousands, we're just one, we probably want to insure two or three. We don't want to, you know, we don't want to, we want to keep it local and like, we don't want to, we want to be able to give that kind of service, and if you extend yourselves, you're going to only do so much.
Great, all right, thank you very much. Next up, we have Esther Burke and Chamberlain. Come on up and introduce yourself.
I'm Charlie Brook from Esther Burke and Chamberlain.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you. We did do business with the town for probably 18 years prior to three years ago. I did go out to bid, it was actually $7,000 difference when apples to apples was arranged on that bid. Now, it may have been 50 from the prior year, but when bids come in, people will lower prices from time to time. I'm using Gladfelter's Insurance. They write many towns and school systems throughout the country. They write on A-plus paper, the, and they write school board legal liability. Travelers does not do that. So if you do see, you'll see a separate quote from a separate company, from East Bridgewater. I also want to point out that public officials liability and school board liability have claims made policies, and there is a retroactive date on those. The retroactive date says, "We'll cover from this point on." Our policies go back to 1994, the current ones start in 2016. There could be a gap of a claim that comes in that something happened in 2014, as far as discrimination along that line. It will not get covered under your current ones. I'm using Mega on the workers' compensation, we used Mega prior to this on the workers' compensation. Your experience modification is going down, it had shot up a little bit, and it all came down to one large claim. And when you have one large claim, you can only, you might only have two claims for the year, but if one is big, that hurts your experience modification. You haven't had any large claims since then, but you've had, numbers-wise, I see about the same number of claims or more. On payrolls, how we work payrolls is, we either use the last audited number from the payroll, or the town will give us new payrolls in January, February, and say, increase the payrolls by 2%, 2.5%. And do that to avoid audits. It was not done, payrolls were not being upped for the last few years that we were here, and I'm not sure why, I don't know if it's because they weren't sure what the salary was going to go up, so they just said, "No, keep it the same, and we'll look at it when it comes up." I would utilize Hartford on the fire and police, and to do that, I would need a broker record letter. In 2016, the town gave this broker record letter to East Bridgewater Insurance, and basically, just as the customer, the town, tells the insurance company, "We want you to recognize this agent to be our agent from now on." So I would be doing the same premium, same policy. I would also have to do the same on the, let's see, where is it? It's the mask mutual policy, it's for the McNamara coverage, for the volunteers. And you'll see that on my proposal, I did not have a price there, because I did not know what the renewal would be. So the renewal proposal is $2,078.44, so that amount would have to be added to my proposal. As far as Gladfelter's, we'll be sending out somebody to look at all your buildings in, if we were successful sometime between July 1st and October 1st, they would come out. They would look and see if there was any slip and fall type items to maybe correct, they'd also just want to see value, the values of the buildings, to make sure we have correct values on buildings and things like that. And if you needed any other loss control assistance, it is available, and it was available prior, it just not always was utilized. We write approximately, we have like three other towns, a couple school systems, and a county. And so, yes, we have more than one town, but we have a system in-house, and I look at, I check the claims, I go over all the policies every renewal time, I meet with people at budget times in December, January, February, and try to make everything go smooth. And I'm always, we're only in Bridgewater, I'm a call away, I return calls within a day, and emails, et cetera. I don't know if there's any questions I can help you with?
Questions, Dave?
No.
Carol?
No, thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thanks, Charlie.
Thank you.
Move on to our next. Yes, next point is with Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association.
Good evening.
How you doing?
Good.
Thanks for having us.
My name's David Labonte, I'm representing the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, that's why we say MIA, it's a lot shorter. Thank you for the opportunity to let MIA quote. Quickly, just kind of looking at things, we based our quote based upon the information that we were able to collect from the town, so there may be some discrepancies. When I looked at the three proposals quick, the blanket billing limit is relatively similar to all of us, it may be off just slightly. One of the differences, our property deductible is at $1,000, the other two proposals, I believe, are at $10,000. We are including workers' comp, property liability, and the injured on duty as well. Your experience mod is at a .83, which means you're getting a 17% credit off the manual premium, which is a good thing. Everyone starts at a 1, so depending on claim frequency, it either goes up or it goes down. So you had a good point there. Payrolls are based on estimated payroll, so at the end of any policy year, they would do a true-up to make sure that the payroll we estimated was accurate. If we've overestimated, you'll get a money back on that basis. Under the program with MIA, you have the ability to take advantage of a 3% prepayment credit. If you pay the premium within the first 30 days of July 1, you get a 3% credit, and that's roughly another $11,864 that would come off that piece. MIA is also very active in the area of risk management. We provide a grant program that the town would be able to participate in. The grant program gets refunded every July, August, so you'd have the ability to apply for a grant up to $10,000 to go towards safety equipment, specialized training. Outside of that, we also offer what's called the MIA Rewards Program, and you can do different risk management activities, attend training sessions, you would earn premium credits that would then get applied towards your next year's renewal. You could earn up to a maximum of 8% off that 3.95 number. Most towns, within the first year, some would fall between that 3 to 5 is a realistic expectation based upon activity. You would be assigned a risk management rep, there's six reps in the MIA program, because we cover the entire state, we have over 375 municipal entities that we work with in Massachusetts. So you'd have someone that would, you know, work with your department heads, making sure that they are moving towards, you know, maximizing that credit. Our retro date on the public officials is the same, it's 7/1/94, so there'll be no, you know, concern with anything falling outside of that. You want to take a look at the professional liability limits, our limits cover school board, public officials, and law enforcement. It's a $1 million per occurrence, a $3 million aggregate, your umbrella of $2 million would sit over those as well, so it bumps everything up by a $2 million piece. There's certain vehicles on the schedule that we are insuring at replacement cost, specifically the sum of fire trucks, high-value equipment. So let's say a tanker is worth $500,000 today, but it costs $501,000 tomorrow, that's what you get. So it's not agreed value, it's not actual cash value, it's there. A few years ago, if you would add a new police cruiser to the policy on 7-1, that would automatically be added at replacement cost, under our program. Other vehicles that we can add at replacement cost would be some of your bigger DPW vehicles, anything that weighs over 26,000 pounds can get added at replacement cost. The partner we use under the injured on duty program is Chubb. So we have, we merit the limit, or the limits that you have under the Hartford piece, $100,000 medical per claim. There's a death benefit for full-time folks, as well as the McNamara piece, we have it all in-house, each year, a CPA calculates the death benefit for us this year for a full-time, excuse me, for a volunteer or call firefighter, police officer, is $625,000 is what the death benefit is. Couple of differences, there are some limitations under the current piece in terms of the benefit period, looks like it's a two-year benefit period for the indemnity, the weekly component of it. We are, it's up to age 70 for us, for the disability, for the weekly indemnity, as well as our medical benefit period is a 10-year medical benefit period under the IOD piece. This quick highlight of the program, so, questions for me or my program?
Could you just go through the process for applying for grants?
Could you just go through the process for applying for grants a little bit?
Yep. So the application is usually a one-page application. There'd be some criteria. We look at it from the entire membership to kind of see where the claims are coming from as a group. But you really get to focus on a line of coverage or looking at your claims, we would say, let's focus in this area. You submit the application along with some input from the loss control rep who's assigned to you. You would get it submitted by mid-October, and then by mid-November, early-December, you would get notified of the amount that you were awarded. We could pay the vendor directly, or you, the town, makes payment to the vendor, you show us the pay receipt, then we reimburse the town.
And how much money is put into that grant program each year?
About 750,000. It goes up a little bit, I think they're going to bump it up this year.
Questions? All right, I think we're good.
Great.
All right, thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You have homework.
Yes. Quite a bit to read through. And now move on to our joint appointment with the Board of Library Trustees. Not here yet. All right. Planning board's not here. And we'll move on to our action items. I'm sure we have a few tonight.
We do have.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the June 3, 2019, 6:30 Board of Select meeting.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I move to approve the request from Chuck Corran, East Bridgewater Kiwanis Club for the use of the Town Common, because it's play American flag for two weeks on the Town Common. 200 veterans, field of flags November 2, 2019 through November 16, 2019.
Second?
Any further discussion?
No, this is just a great thing that the Kiwanis Club gets involved in every year. It's amazing to see, see these flags go up in memory for 15 years.
Oh yeah, it's great seeing it light up at night up there, looks great. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for Karen Ziegler, from the Community Gardens, for the use of the outside of S H M for our community center on September 21, 2019, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., with the rain date of September 22, 2019, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., for a harvest festival to celebrate the success of the garden.
Second?
Any further discussion?
They do have a great success down there.
It's my birthday, I think it's actually really a surprise party.
Is it, yeah? Can we make sure we have a meeting hosted that night?
Do we, if we look at a count, make sure nothing was already booked from?
Yeah. Just Carol's birthday party.
Just my birthday.
Birthday party?
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request from Linda Varrasso, Little Vikings Summer Institute, to hang a banner on the Town Common, called Little Vikings from June to August.
Second?
Any further discussion?
We've had some conversations about this, Mr. Chairman, about how long a banner should be allowed to go up there, which we have a set of rules, which we should be looking at in the future, but one thing I think we have to make sure is that whoever's in charge of putting these banners up there, it is their responsibility to make sure that these banners are kept in good condition, that they're not ripping away, that they're tied down, because some of the banners we've had up there recently have been torn, and no one comes down to fix them, so we'd just like to add that on to...
I think...
I agree.
I think for our next meeting, we'll put it down as an action item to vote on a timeframe for signs on the common.
Yeah, we'll have to...
I mean, Little Vikings got it in before we had the chance, but I agree, I mean, the DPW spends an awful lot of time up there making the common look as good as it does, and, you know, some of the signs that are up there and some of the requests we have are, you know, they want to sign up there for three months at a time, so...
We'll have to adopt some kind of a total bylaw responsibility there, Mr. Chairman.
I think if we have a policy in place, then it becomes much easier, and I actually even suggested maybe Historical Commission might want to come up with some guidelines for policies, since it's part of our, you know, the common is considered a historic district, so maybe they could give us some guidance, too.
Would you send a letter after this is approved? So maybe we could put something in the letter, you know, about how to, you know, upkeep up the banner, too?
But like Bill said, they snuck it in under the...
Yeah. Oh yeah, no, no, it's fine. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from Fire Chief Tim Harren for the quarterly ambulance billing abatements as of May 2019, in the amount of 51,851.44.
Second?
Any further discussion? There's just something we do every year, every quarter, rather, and get it off the books for uncollectible ambulance billing. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, to adopt the buy recycle policy commencing July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020, recommending that when all departments place an order with a vendor, they ask for products containing recycled contents.
Second?
Any further discussion? It's pretty self-explanatory. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the board committee member reappointments. Lisa McKay as Animal Control Officer effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Second?
That will go to...
If you don't mind.
I don't mind.
Paula Bunker as the Assistant Animal Inspector, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Peter Santinelli to the Agricultural Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Cameron Woodard to the Agricultural Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Greg Hager to the Boiler Appeals Alternate, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Claire Yocum to the Conservation Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Craig Windsor to the Conservation Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Elliot Jacobs to the Conservation Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Rosemary Sakosha to the Council on Aging, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Robert Ringette to the Council on Aging, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Dale Julius to the Historic Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Edward Sweeney to the Patriotic Activities Commission, Committee, excuse me, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Frank Ray to the Register of Voters, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. Tim Harren as Director of Emergency Management, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Tim Harren to the Forest Warden, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Tim Harren as the Right to Know Law Coordinator, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Frederick Tully as the Gas and Plumbing Inspector, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. William Michael Doyle as the Assistant Gas and Plumbing Inspector, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. David Bentley Jr. as the Wiring Inspector, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. F. Craig Hall as the Assistant Wiring Inspector, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. David R. Moore as the Sealer of Weights and Measures, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Sharon Dunn to the Agricultural Commission Alternate, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Patrick Franny to the Federal Handicapped Compliance Program, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Alexandra Waugh to the Historic Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Jean Bennett as the Park and Clerk, Hearing Clerk, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Nancy Hill to the Old Colony Elder Services, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020. Nancy Hill to the Old Colony Planning Area Agency on Aging, July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2020.
Second?
Any further discussion? Just like to thank all the volunteers that hope keep our town moving forward on these, all these different boards and commissions. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the following board committee resignations, effective June 30, 2019. Eileen McNulty from the Council on Aging, Ken Delacchio from the Arts Council, and Vanello Vecchio from the Arts Council.
Second?
Further discussion?
Just like to thank all these people for their dedication to these committees, and now that we have some openings, hopefully we can get some replacements.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have additional action items? Yes.
I do. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resignation of Michelle O'Hearn from the Finance Committee, effective June 30, 2019.
Second?
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to thank Michelle for her years of service to the Finance Committee. It's a very tough, tough job, as we've seen over the last few years, but she handled it fantastic, and we wish her well, and hopefully we'll see her back here.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Robert Looney to the Board of Appeals, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Robert Cattellus to the Recreation Commission, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022.
Second?
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think we move on to a joint appointment with the Board of Library Trustees. Ready, line up, introduce yourselves.
Hello?
Hello. Good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Aren't you supposed to be over there, Russ?
Normally I am.
So the Board of Library Trustees would like to appoint Russ Hanigan to fill an interim position until town election next April.
I'll make a motion to approve Russell Hanigan to fill the vacancy at the Board of Library Trustees from June... Do we have to do that as of today? Rather than June 3?
Why was it June 3?
I think originally that's when they were coming in.
Oh, that was the original...
So we'll change it to...
It'll be today.
We'll change it to June 17, 2019, through April 11, 2020. Is that the actual date of the election?
Yep.
Then it would be through April 10, 2020.
Yes, you're good. Yes, second.
All right, any further discussion?
Russell, another hat. How many can you wear?
I'm a glutton for punishment.
I've said that on many occasions.
Thank you.
Being a library trustee is a good thing, thank you for stepping up, for all of you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I understand that you guys will issue a letter, and then Russ takes that to the town clerk to be sworn in, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, so he'll get in touch with you.
Make sure you do it before your next meeting.
Okay. Do we get a secret handshake or anything like that, or?
You just have to carry a book.
Don't discuss that on camera.
Yeah. Good job, Russ, thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in. You're late, you missed it.
Thank you, Chris, for your input, we appreciate it.
All right, and we're, see, we're about 20 minutes ahead.
I'm going to see if they're ready.
Can we do all our action items?
Yeah.
Who are you?
How about that?
Just get through.
So no town administrator report this evening? Anything for board discussions?
No.
Are we doing the liaison appointments? Can we just keep them the same?
Are you going to keep them the same?
I think that's fine.
I'd make a motion just to keep them the same.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm fine. I gotta put up with historic.
We all have our crosses to bear.
All in favor?
I need a second.
Second?
Oh, sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
On the discussions, I'd like to, again, the crowd that we had for the Sparkle Fest tutu run Saturday was incredible.
Yep.
The weather was just unbelievable, and it looks like they're, you know, they just continue to grow and grow, and it's a great sight to see, not only just all of East Bridgewater people out there, but all the surrounding towns. It's a credit to everyone that's involved in the community, they do a tremendous job.
It was great, I think every year they do it, there's more people each year, and it's really taken off over the years. And I give the Cravens an immense amount of credit to really do it, it's an inspiration.
It's an amazing thing. They took in a terrible tragedy and turned it into something that everybody in the community gets to participate in and, you know, be involved in, and I think it's really, really something special. Plus, I love all the pink. There's nothing quite like the sight of our clerk in a pink tutu.
I'm just happy they don't do the dunk tank anymore.
I tried to bring that back.
That water was freezing, yeah.
Was that chairman in the dunk tank? Is that on the wall? I can see where this is going.
Some people couldn't hit the thing with the ball, so they were just walking up all morning, dunking me.
You never give up that opportunity, Mr. Chairman. You don't know when it will come around again.
It's a good day.
The planning board taking a break? The planning board coming down?
We had to cancel the Dale and the Duds concert for the weather, but we're going to try to schedule a back-to-school concert instead.
They're waiting for one short term.
The what?
They're waiting for one longer. You guys want to sign stuff?
Yeah, let's sign. Rebecca, could you?
What about this meeting, are we talking about our meeting schedule?
Oh, yeah. So these are the upcoming meetings?
We'll meet three times in July?
I doubt it.
That might have been a...
I bet we aren't.
That might have been an error, because isn't, um...
We seem to do this every year.
What?
Is it what?
July, he said I do this every year, I don't know.
No, I didn't say you, I said we do this every year, and then we cancel.
Well, July 29th and August 5th?
Oh, yeah.
I think those are back-to-back.
Yeah, they are.
I don't know why.
All right, you guys want to keep the July 1st, and then, because we're going to have to meet in between to meet with the veterans?
We can do that when we have.
We have a meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll keep July 1st?
I'm good.
And then...
We move to 15th.
Yeah.
So 15th.
And you want to do...
We move to 5th.
Yeah. So you want to meet the 29th, or we'll play it by year if we...
Yeah, we'll, you know, historically in the summer, if we have something, you know, we'll call another meeting.
Right.
You know, if it's just a couple of things we have to come in and sign, we'll just come in and cancel a full meeting. But again, we are going to have meetings we'll probably have to add because of the town administrator and...
Yep, and the veterans.
Stuff like that, veterans. Veterans, I think we're scheduled for the 5th to do the interviews, so we'll have to at least come back in session.
All right.
And I'm out of time.
And actually, we'll have to do something after the 5th, because Mr. Charles has gone on the 26th, so we will have to call a meeting to do an appointment after we... But we'll take, worry about that down the road.
So for now, the 15th and the 5th?
Eliminate the 15th and the 5th.
We'll take off.
And then we'll send the rest after the fact.
We'll decide on August, yeah, we can figure that out later.
We got it.
I'm out of time on the 19th. Without me, or we can meet before.
Again, about that time, we're probably going to have other meetings anyhow for the town administrators, so we'll adjust accordingly.
Yeah, all right. Sounds good.
All right, let's sign what we have here.
We'll ask them to track those dates, but I know Rebecca will have them.
Somebody said...
I don't know what I said. You know, do you want to get up and, like, sing a song or something while we wait for planning board?
Reading the annual town report.
No, don't do stand-up. No.
This is a family channel.
Literally.
I think that's just the backup for that.
Oh, they got separated.
Anything for reminders or? Nothing, nope.
No, I wish I had.
No material tonight.
School's out. Drive carefully.
Exactly. School's out. Dave, how was the flagpole dedication?
You know, it was excellent. We probably had about 30 people or so there.
It was good. Yeah.
I had no complaint.
It went very, it went very, very well. It was, it's something to be very proud of when you have a member of the military that wants to dedicate a flag to his hometown. It shows a lot of pride there. And it was, I was very proud to be a part of it.
It was nice to have the band playing. They gave a nice speech.
The band was there. And I was talking with Mr. Ponte afterwards that, you know, that chorus group does such a great job. We should even, you know, when we get back into school, have them come in here and do a couple.
We could use them right now.
Have them come in here and, you know, show off the stuff.
That'd be great. I love that they sing in front of, you know, that they set up the band in front of town meeting. That was awesome.
Yeah. So, let's, let's get them in here when school comes back.
After we figure out what dates we're meeting. Told he has arrived.
Pardon?
The member has arrived.
Okay. We'll give them a standing ovation when they... We appreciate them showing up. Actually, you know.
Well, technically, they're not supposed to.
Yeah.
No, they're not. It's 20th.
I didn't get to make it down, but they had the car show down at the center from 4:00 to 6:00 this afternoon. And they, they had great weather for it.
Yeah.
And it would be, you know, if our department comes out and gives away hamburgers and hot dogs. I know the participation's been growing and growing every year with the, with the antique cars coming in. So, it's just one of the many things that happens down at that center. It's incredible.
Yeah, they seem to have a lot of activities there.
Yeah, they do.
And just being down there for the flag dedication, plenty of people in those rooms using and utilizing it.
Phyllis, do you have any updates you could give us on anything? Hey, Bernie.
How are you?
How you doing?
Hello.
We have some more strikeless coming down, Bernie? We have some more coming down?
Uh...
Yep, David Johnson. Now we have one.
Hey, come on up. Through our joint appointment with the...
Mr. Vice Chairman, how are you?
Pretty good. Hanging in there. Are we all set to go?
Yeah.
We convene the planning board? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. David Johnson, Vice Chairman of the Planning Board, here tonight to have a joint appointment for two associate members of the planning board. With me also are Bernie Smith, member, Lyndy Snow, and Rob Lyons, and Kevin Riley, one of the applicants for a position. We really have two very good applicants. We have two positions open for associate members. And we have really two good applicants that have experience with real estate issues. And I think will make excellent members of the planning board, not only as associate members, but should their vacancy occur or one of us decide not to run anymore, that they could...
Find your tongue, Dave.
Work into a full-time planning board member position. The planning board voted to unanimously recommend to the selectmen that they concur. And we have a joint appointment for Kevin Riley and Christine Hanley.
Okay.
So, if we have any questions, either for the planning board or for Kevin?
Let's have a quick, are we correct on, we have alternate on our, is it alternate or associate member the real term?
I think it's alternate.
I think it's associate.
Is it associate?
I think it's associate member.
Okay.
What do I have on the agenda?
Alternate.
Yeah, associate member.
It is associate, okay.
They are chartered to, they will only act on special permits. They will not act in the general conduct of business, although they'll be at the meetings and observing. But they will be filling a position on special permits if a member is, we don't have a quorum, or a member has to recuse themselves because of some conflict of interest with the matter in front of the board. So...
Mr. Riley? I'll have Mr. Riley to give us a little background.
Sure, right up there. Kevin Riley, I am a, oh, about a four-and-a-half-year resident of EB at this point. Moved to Surrey Lane back when I left Randolph with my wife in 2015. By way of background, I'm a practicing attorney who've been for longer than I can get to remember, actually, about 30, 37-odd years now. Do a lot of stuff in my practice that involves land use, representing builders, buyers, sellers, appear before community boards in the Randolph area for a lot of, for a lot of years now. And, you know, certainly have an interest in the subject and look forward to, you know, working with, working with the planning board and getting to, a little bit more involved in East Bridgewater, right? Was actually the elected town moderator in Randolph until they changed their government a number of years ago and enjoyed the idea of public service as well, so.
Fantastic background.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for stepping up and getting involved.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to appoint Kevin Riley to be a planning board as an associate member effective June 17th through June 30th, 2022.
Yeah, it does say associate on the, it says alternate on our spreadsheet. Do you want it to change to say associate?
Yes. I thought it, when I was up there, was always associate.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Now, the planning board. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I vote, make a motion to approve Christine Hanley to the planning board as an associate member effective June 17th, 2019 through June 30th, 2022.
Second?
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome to the board.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Look forward to...
Continue joining the boards for the town. Need some help.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
All in favor?
How are you? Good, good, you. Everything's going well up there?